I've done this before, but I'm not sure whether, I've heard different ways of doing this, whether or not we need a motion to open the meeting, or do I just open the meeting? I would rather have a, I'd rather have a motion.
I move that we start the meeting.
I second that.
All in favor?
Yes.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay. Let's see, we have a regular meeting tonight, and it is a public hearing on the Broughton 390 Route 22, West Lake, New York, the variance for setbacks for installation of ground-mounted solar panels. Would you like to speak? Go right ahead.
Hello, so for the record, my name is Patrick, I'm with Empire Solar Solutions. We are the solar contractors for this project at the Broughton residence. And we are here because we would like to present our ground-mounted solar installation. We are proposing a 28-panel 11.48 kilowatt system that will be positioned basically directly south of the main residence. And the reason we are here for this meeting is because we are requesting a variance for the rear setback requirements. It is 35 feet per year codes, and we are requesting a 20, I believe it's 20-foot variance for that setback.
Any questions, or anyone from the audience that want to make any statements? Okay. Well, I take it there's nobody on the board that has any objections?
Um, objections to?
To the variance.
To voting, or just to the, to the variance?
Right. Hmm?
I thought it was a 35 foot.
That's what he said, that's what he said.
I think it's a 20.
No, 35.
Okay, well, if there's no discussion, uh...
Could I ask, was there any, was there any letter or anything like that sent recommending, or?
From the planning board?
From, no, from the public.
I haven't gotten any.
Okay.
Haven't gotten anything from the public.
I had a couple of phone calls, but they told me to show up if they had more questions, and they didn't want to, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I, well, I have noticed that the property that's adjacent seems to be for sale in the past couple of days. Drove by.
Jason or the mountain is what, up for sale, yeah. The mountain went for sale, he used to go and work for them.
Right, it's, but it's the one adjacent to the setback where?
It's, yeah, but I've talked to Lindstrom about it. So, they're, they're more concerned about the right-of-way to the power lines. They want to use that as a road, as a, as a selling, like a pro. So they, so I actually talked to him about buying some property, but they're gonna, they're gonna talk about that later. We'll see how this works out. But, um, they want to keep the road under the power lines, because the nice egg keeps it cleared. So they said they don't want to do any, give me any property. So we talked about going across to the other side, so well, I'd go to this side still plenty. But it's so steep at that point, they've looked at it, it's like nothing you can do there. The health department wouldn't allow any septic system to be built on either, any, and were my, so that's not an issue with that. They're selling the whole mountain, it's like 155 acres, I think they're asking 700 for it.
Right, but it, but it is the parcel that is adjacent to the property line.
Yep.
That, okay. So, there isn't anybody here to speak for that parcel, I guess, since it's in transition.
Well, and the public notice went out, right?
Oh, yeah, I've talked to him about it, he knows about it.
He knows about it, so if he doesn't, you know, he's, if he'd had complaints, he would have gotten in touch with us.
No, I understand, it's just something I noticed. And I have to say, I do have some concern about, um, the, a solar, a solar array is quite tall. You know, it's, I think your section showed, is it 12 feet on the steepest?
I can get the exact number if you'd like.
16. Even if it is 16, the trees are at least 20.
Uh, so it is, let's see, is 12 feet above the ground, that's the maximum height it reaches.
12 feet, so, and you're about 15 feet from the property line is what you'd like to be.
Yes, the real property line.
And I think the other factor is that a lot of times around a solar array, ground mount, there's, um, it's not that easy to keep up the, the maintenance around it, you know, because what happens?
It, it's a lot easier than a roof to do any maintenance on a ground mount, because it's right on the ground. When they're on the roof, you have roof leaks due to the installation, you get grips. The ground mounts are actually the easiest ones to do. There's a little more costly to install, because you're having to create a mount. But aside from that, there, if you have a panel that goes out and needs to be maintained, it's much, much easier to maintain.
Right, but I'm talking about mowing, or, you know, as far as?
Just get some sheep.
Yeah.
That's what they do.
Yeah.
Well, you can say that, but if you, if you're the neighbor.
I'm not, I'm not understanding why, why this is an objection, I don't understand. Why are you raising these issues now?
Well, I guess I'm raising them because I'm looking at why we have the setback in the first place. You know, there, there are always concerns on property lines, how it affects the person who lives next to you. So I'm just bringing up what, why, why we have the setbacks, because if you're in an RA or an, or an RA district, you're gonna have a hundred-foot setback, I mean, this is only 35 feet. So, you know, in other, other districts, the setback gets to be even more, so we're, we'd be, we'd be asked to give this a very minimal setback, and, and so both the shape of it, which is gonna be, um, you know, four feet taller than you are if you're six feet tall at the tallest point. And the way that it's maintained sort of affects the person on the other side of the property. And I think that one good thing is that the reflective side is not toward the neighbor. But that's another issue that people get concerned about.
Well, the other thing is, is the, it doesn't look like there's any room behind you, or anybody who builds a house, or be neighbors.
Yeah, the, the setback we're requesting a variance on is right up against utility lines.
Yeah.
Um, so I know, he just mentioned there's some sale of that property, I doubt it would be for a residential complex or a residential building, because you would have to move the power lines.
And I think that when the power company probably has, what, like a 75-foot right-of-way, so you're talking?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's 100 feet, we're like 170 feet from the power line, so we're not worried about that.
I was down there, I saw, I mean, I did notice that with the hedge in the back, and I actually went up to the outlook about a week later after visiting there, and I looked down with my binoculars and everything. You can hardly see this place, you know, so where they're located and facing south, it's not like there's gonna be reflective, you know, like people will be up there like, ah, what's that glow there, you know what I mean? It's on the, you know, it's, it's facing south, so, um, I mean, I, it's actually pretty hard to find his property, because it's, it's kind of down in there, you know?
Yeah, no, it has really good natural coverage.
A narrow start, you know what I mean, so.
And also, if anybody had had, or have, would have had objections, that's what the public hearing was for. And they should have been here tonight.
Right.
But I think, you know, if, if the question is, like, behind him, going up the mountain, it's pretty steep. You have the power line, so where you're gonna put a house, if whoever buys the property, I mean, they're probably gonna build on top of the mountain, they're not, they're not even gonna see those things, you know what I mean? They're gonna be down below, I mean, unless they clear out a bunch of trees or something, but I, I, you know. I don't know if I can see that happening, but whatever, you know. I personally didn't have a problem where they're located, I mean, I...
Right. Well, I mean, just because of the fact that it is something that's kind of self-created, under the definition of, you know, the owner has created the situation by not planning, it just seems that we should look at the effect on adjacent property.
I mean, if he had to put them on the roof, they would actually be more, 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 you know, yeah, more obvious to the neighbors and across the valley and this and that. Where they're kind of tucked behind the hedge, I mean, you would almost, you almost have to like look for them, you know what I mean? You know, that's the kind of feeling I got, you know?
Well, I'm, I'm not so sure about that, because it's a whole separate structure. It's 30, 40 feet long, and I don't have my map with me.
30 feet is probably from, from, from us to him, to, um, to Doug.
So, for the record, if you guys would like.
The footprint?
The total length of the system is 39.725 feet, and the panels themselves, their width, I guess, when you like stack panels from the bottom to the top is 14.52 feet. But that's not an angle, so really what matters is 12 feet straight up, about 39 feet horizontal.
Right, right. I mean, I just think, in imagining it, it is like a little building, you have to realize.
Oh, yeah.
You know? So.
I mean, all I can say to that is, this property has a lot of natural coverage. You guys have all been out to the site, I don't think it's gonna be very noticeable from the road, I understand your concerns. But he really doesn't even have any direct neighbors within even a couple hundred yards. And yet, maybe if someone does build on that back property at some point, they decide to move the power lines, or build on the hill, because I know he said it's more of a mountain. Maybe that could have been a concern, but that's also why we have public hearings.
Yeah.
The, um, the house sites that the flood has, you can ask him, there's, I know this property well, it's being sold. There's the, the obvious one that's in shambles on the road. There's also a, a, a site, they're calling it a house site, but it's very close to the power lines where the art community put the greenhouse, and there's a bunch of structures that are still like half-made, little middle cabins. And then if you go farther up on this dirt road, at the top of the, the mountain, which that's probably the people that have that kind of money to buy a mountain, that's where they're gonna put their house anyway. That's, there's big clearing up there, there's been kind of a little settlement thing for years, I think decades. And they've been kind, they have a campsite there as well. So, and they're all farther north, like that's probably, as a crow flies, from, from where this structure would be, 300-plus yards, maybe more, and that's as a crow flies up the hill. And not visible at all, not visible to me. Actually, would be saying, if you put them on the roof, which would be impractical, because they don't get the sun coverage, they'd be glowing, glowing right up the hill, whoever builds, they're gonna see them, like in the morning, they're gonna be complaining about this glare in their face, because that's gonna be facing east, and the cabin as well, east and west. And this faces south to really nobody. I went down to the guy, that's right across from me, the road, the closest guy, and he's never there in the day. But I looked around, and even in the winter, when the, when the leaves are down, you can't see it, you can't see anything.
Do you have a plan for taking them down if at some point you stop using them?
If what? I'm sorry?
If they stop using them.
Oh.
You mean if they stop using the panels?
If you stop using the panels, right, if they become inefficient, or, you know?
I, I don't see that this is our purview.
Yeah, no.
It's just, it's not, it's not, that's not what we're trying to judge here.
That's, yeah, that's, that's beyond the scope of the definition of why they needed a, a variance.
Well, there, there are some codes that require the, the installation to have a commitment to take it apart if it?
Does ours?
If it's stopped use.
Does ours?
Sorry, I'm trying to hear what you said, Jim.
Does ours have that stipulation?
Those are code.
Well, that's what, I don't know if our code has it in the, has that included? Because otherwise, people end up with sort of, it's almost like having an old trailer parked on the side of your property, you know?
I, I don't disagree that that is a concern, but it's not what's before us right now. That's not what we're trying to decide, whether to grant a variance or not, that's nothing. Whether or not they will take it down at some point in the future.
Right, but we're being asked to permit it to be closer to someone else's property. So, it, it would be harder to disguise if it became unused and wasn't being maintained.
But again, if the people of the piece of property adjourning, adjoining is, had any objection, it should have been known at this public hearing.
I agree, but there, we, our code is supposed to also protect people without having to show up and?
Right.
Make a statement. I mean, that's what the code's there for.
I guess to summarize, yes, if, in theory, at some point they stopped using their panels, we have uninstalled ground-mounted systems before, and, so if that happened at some point, that would be possible.
Anything else? Tracy, anything else?
I, I think that's about all, yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? And I will ask, the lawyer, is now a good time to think about reading this? Okay, so before we can, uh, vote, we have to, I have to read this resolution.
Close the public hearing first?
Uh, yes, we need to close the public hearing first.
Right.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I second.
I third.
All, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
So moved. Funny, I wrote that down here and then forgot to.
It's okay.
Thank you, Judy.
You're welcome.
All right. Town of Armenia Zoning Board of Appeals, resolution, and I'm not sure.
I'm not sure the number.
We're not sure the number for 2024. Resolution granting an area variance for setbacks for ground-mounted solar at 390 Old Route 22, December 16th, 2024. Whereas by application dated July 9th, 2024, Douglas Broughton, the applicant, applied for an area variance from setbacks related to the proposed installation of a ground-mounted solar system in the backyard of his residential property located at 390 Old Route 22, text parcel ID 132000-7166-00-194282-0000, the property. And whereas the proposed 39.725 by 14.52 ground-mounted solar is proposed to be 15 feet from the rear property line, whereas the property is located in the town suburban residential ESR zoning district, where ground-mounted systems are permitted as an accessory structure, and whereas pursuant to the Town of Armenia zoning law, section 121-62 dot 1H, one ground-mounted system must meet the setbacks of the principal structure within the zoning district as established in the dimensional table 121 Attachment 2. Whereas the applicant saw a 15-foot rear yard setback, where 50-foot is required necessitating a 30-foot rear yard setback variance.
35, 35.
Uh, 35, I'm sorry, can I read that wrong? Reading too fast. Whereas the application is a type 2 application for seeker purposes in accordance with 6 NYCRR 617 dot 5, sir, 16, for the granting of individual setback and lot line variances. And whereas pursuant to general municipal law 239M, the applicant was submitted, application was submitted to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development due to the property's proximity to Route 22. The county responded with that the application is exempt from county review per an inter-municipal agreement exempting area variances for residential uses. And whereas a public hearing was held on the application on December 16th, 2024, and the public was invited to comment on the application at the hearing, or remote, or submit comments prior to the hearing for consideration by the board. And whereas the board reminded applicant of his obligation to obtain a building permit prior to proceeding with the installation of the ground-mounted system, and to make the site available to the code enforcement officer for regulation inspections. And whereas at its December 16th meeting, 2024 meeting, the board made the findings below, which are being memorialized by this resolution. And there and now, therefore, be it resolved, the board finds that the granting of the requested area variance will not result in a detriment to the health, safety, or welfare of the neighborhood or community. In so finding, the board notes that granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhoods, nor will there be a detriment to nearby properties. That the proposed ground-mounted solar facility will be adjacent to a utility easement, and by the planting trees, by planting trees near the west side property line to screen the view from the nearby scenic view area of Delavern Hill, the solar, excuse me, the solar panels would not be seen. That the rear yard setback variance is substantial, but that the size of the variance alone in this instance should not be detrimental to, determinative, given the character of the property. That the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, and that the difficulty is self-created by virtue of the applicant's desire to install the proposed ground-mounted system within the setbacks. The board finds that on balance, the applicant's request for an area variance shall be granted. And be it further resolved, that a copy of this resolution shall be filed in the office of the Town of Armenia Town Clerk within five days of the date of this resolution, and shall be... shall be mailed to the applicant within the same five day period. The foregoing resolution is, uh, is now to be voted on by the members of the zoning board.
Terry McCaff, chairman?
Yes.
David Minigat is absent. Paula Pelosi is absent. Jim Wright?
Yes.
Tracy Saliday.
Uh, yes.
And we have alternates present tonight, um, George Bistranson?
Yes.
And Craig Miley?
Yes.
Very nice. We're all set?
Be it known that your variance is granted.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Have a wonderful night.
You too. I'll email you that. Yeah, I'll email you that. And I'll let Mike know, or well, the building department, so thanks.
Yeah, okay. Onto the regular meeting. Next item for discussion is the Levine, is it Levine or line?
Levin.
Levin?
Levin.
Levin. Levin subdivision, 189 Armenia Union Road, area variance applications.
And Kirk is here. Kirk Horton.
My name is Kirk Horton, I'm the surveyor for the Levens.
Here's the map, if anybody wants to see it, I'll open it up.
Good question. I think- Is the frontage on it 241 on the lot one?
It's 241 plus all these other courses they have, uh, I couldn't fit the dimension on, so there's a letter with a number and actually goes to the key.
Okay.
They have to have three more distances or four more distances plus that you're-
Do you know what the total is?
Um, just five, I'll say it's about 500 feet.
500, all right, perfect. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Does, do the property owners own parcels around this piece?
Well, they own the farm is, uh-
I, I-
It's sixty, it's 62 acres.
So, so which piece are we, are you subdividing?
This is the piece, and it's got this little neck here that connects with that, so we're taking off this eight acres. It's kind of a natural boundaries on here, we have the stream in the back and hedgerow here. If we were to make it, I don't know if I want me to, on the microphone or-
Yeah, well, it's, it's-
Maybe you can probably hear me.
There you go.
Let her try that.
Okay. Where was I? Well, we're following natural boundaries here. Uh, the, this is an existing line, which follows a tree, a tree line, and then the back line is along the stream, and the other line is following another tree line. If we were to make it 10 acres, we would have to come down this way and then up here, and it would just, you know, you'd be taking out a field that's in use as a farm, farmland now, and then, you know, you're putting it on a residential thing, which it just, it would make it really awkward lot, and it just wouldn't make any sense.
Can I ask you a question specifically? We do not, um-
Uh, excuse me.
Microphone?
Microphone, please. Introduce yourself.
Yeah, I am Laura Slavin. Uh, you asked whether we own the property around it. Uh, we no longer do. All the fields around it were, um, put under conservation easement by the department, the New York State Department of Ag and Markets, and they are now, um, the ownership of the, uh, Laurel Brook Farm, and they are in perpetuity designated as agricultural land. This parcel, uh, remains, so we own, um, a smaller lot, that's only, that's attached to this only by a very small piece along the road. Our original farm did include the land in between. However, it has never been really part of the farming, the farm, an agricultural aspect of our farm, most of which now has been transferred to Laurel Brook Farm. Because it's, it's, as Mr. Horton was explaining, there are very specific, um, contour, um, around them that really defines this lot, and it is also really adjacent to the hamlet of Armenia Union. It is right op, right opposite the Shundes Range Hall, uh, right next to the, the houses and little houses in Armenia Union. The only reason I think it wasn't included originally in that, in that zoning and was included in, in the agricultural, um, was because it had been included in the lot that we purchased 35 years ago. However, it is not physically, um, a part of either our original, our original farm, because they weren't able to farm it, it wasn't, didn't have the agricultural fields that, um, you know, enabled us to continue farming there, so it's very little farming we were able to do there. And whatever acreage is, is there is, it's really a house, it's really a hamlet house. And, um, now that it's surrounded by other property, it really makes no sense for us to, to keep it, and we would like to, um, subdivide it.
Okay, okay.
Does that explain?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it sits right on the border between the two different zones. This would be the five acre zone to the north, and there's a ten acre on this lot.
So is it before Hitchcock Corners or?
Yeah, it's south of Hitchcock Corners.
Okay, so it's right around that sharp corner? You know, right when you come out of like the world-
Well, it's actually-
I know where the Shundes live, the, it's like an old church.
You go up the hill, hill from, from Hitchcock Corners, you go, uh, what's the road that goes into Connecticut?
Uh, Niblo.
Niblo.
Niblo Hill Road. You go past that, and you go, start to go down the other side, it's the house around the right.
Yeah, right around that corner, there's a house there, and it's like an S turn.
Yeah, that's right, that's right on the turn.
So is that house included in this?
Yeah, that's the house, we're gonna cut that off with eight acres.
Okay, all right, so the house is in, okay.
The house and the barn are part of the eight acres.
Okay, all right, all right, I know. And now that creek right there, is that the Weebit Talk or is that a tributary to it?
That's a tributary to it, they call it the Little River.
Okay, yeah, that comes down from like, um, you know, yeah, I know where it is.
Yeah.
Little River Farm or what it's called.
It comes down from, it comes down from Connecticut.
Yeah, yeah, right, 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 exactly.
It's really called the Millbrook, but we're not gonna-
Okay. No, I, I know, okay, I know where it is. And then, so it goes, and then the end of it is right about where your entrance to your, the farm is, you know, like you have the, um, like the tenant house there, you know? Like, you say it's like 500 feet, right?
Yeah, uh, they got McDonald's here, they have a house right on the road, pretty close, then this is all down in this house, this is toward the bottom of the hill, right where the turn is. So this would be like the top of the hill, you come down the curve and you're going downhill. This would be like the bottom of the hill, and then you come back up again. This would be that, I think it's a gray house. Either white or gray, I can't remember.
The house is pretty much in the corner, isn't it?
Yeah, it's on that sharp corner.
I mean, right here, in the corner of the property.
Right.
Yes.
The application materials I had read, uh, it was listed that it follows a tree line, and it looks like some of the tree line isn't field. Can that be? In other words, your, your argument, and it's a good one, is that you are following the contours of the field so that-
Right.
Those remain. But I think in the application, it didn't reflect that, and so I was hoping you could-
Well, I think I said it would be an irregular shaped lot if we had to make it 10 acres. And you would, the, the 10 acres would go out into another field, and so now you're putting the, the field as a residential use instead of having as a field. As part of the farm still.
I think when I looked at the lot, the lot lines and looked at the stream or, you know, the water body, and then the trees, it follows this part of the trees, there's trees here, and so I think you just have to kind of clarify the argument that this is to preserve farmland for the, the other adjacent property. And then part of the stream, you do cover the opposite side of the stream, but part of it you cover-
Well, it's kind of the mean line of the stream, it meanders back and forth.
Yeah. I think with, with one statement saying that this is protecting the field for this parcel, that would, that would resolve it. That's what we're looking for, I think.
I'll have to look at that, I thought I said that, but maybe not, maybe it wasn't there.
So the, the gray house on this eight acres to be separated is, is 189, is that correct? That's the number?
That's the number?
No.
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 That's, that's the Levens property, that's, that's their address.
Is there an address?
Uh, 279.
Thank you. And then are there other buildings on the property, barn or?
It's a big barn.
On the eight acres, yes, there's another barn, it's kind of like a double barn, two fil, two barns together.
It's a very long barn that's set off back from the road.
It's L-shaped, so it's like-
You don't see it as an L shape unless you're on a park.
That isn't needed for the, for the big farm?
No.
So his application, um, statement does, if you want to read this, say something about what she was asking about? I don't know if you want to read that, but about the farm and the trees?
I didn't specifically say it's the same as the field.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, just add that statement like you want.
You've, uh, you stated that, uh, the, if it was to be 10 acres, it would be an odd shaped, you know, lot, what would it look like?
Well, you'd have to come, this has all been conveyed out now, this is a Laurel, Laurel Brook heifer. So this is the new line right here, this is a little short section, so you'd have to come across this and up this field here and pick up like an acre out of there.
Yeah.
It would, it would just be ridiculous.
So this, so this, this piece is, belongs to someone else now, right?
Yeah, this is, uh-
Why did Laurel Brook want that little tongue there?
It's not possible. There's not, there's not 10 acres, I mean, it's impossible.
I guess it doesn't matter, but-
That wasn't what I was asking, I just asked what it would look like if they had to do it, I wanted to see.
You couldn't, you couldn't do it anymore.
Well, you could do it, you would have to include an acre here like that, it would be ridiculous.
It would be a very odd shape.
Yeah, it wouldn't make any sense.
That's what I wanted to know.
The, the thing, I don't know if I have the right to talk about this, I live there, okay?
Yeah, I know.
I live there, and there's, um, this 10 acre thing is just artificial.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, and that's why, to me, it makes a great deal of sense to just, I don't know if we can do that, we have to have a public hearing or something?
For a variance, yeah, you've got to have a public hearing.
All right, well then, my two cents is that it's part of the hamlet and that the, uh, that we should strongly consider granting the variance.
Well, yeah, well, I just, I've lived, I've lived here long enough to know where that is. In fact, I've lived here, I was in your house before you were. That's how long I've lived here. So, uh, yeah, I understand what, which, and I agree that it looks a lot better that way. I just wanted to make sure that, uh, everybody understood that-
Yeah.
There's no alternatives being put before us.
Is there any reason that, um, the Laurel Brook property has that tongue that sticks down? I mean, I'm just curious, really.
It's a field, it's a field in there.
Okay.
Probably a pretty good sized field, but it looks a lot.
30 acre field.
Yeah, it basically comes down and runs all the way up to the river.
And that's, that, I'm sure they don't-
It's like divided by the, the stream though, right? The stream goes through that field, right? I'm just, see where it comes out, it's like-
Yeah, the stream comes up here and connects up here somewhere.
Okay.
This, this 30 acre field from, basically from the road all the way to Weebit, to the Weebit Creek, which is right here. It's, this, uh, goes-
It goes all over, winds around.
Yeah.
Goes around here, but this is a 30 acre piece, and we're actually, if we want to know, because it's gonna happen, we want to donate this to Laurel Brook, so that they have technically a road, road farm.
Yeah, right, right.
So that's why I say, I was hoping that we wouldn't have to consider, even consider doing a weird, a weird lot, um, because, because it is, not only is it so defined and that this would be, this is actually, um, a paddock right here.
Yeah, right, right, right.
And this is just all woodsy area.
See, right now, when they're, when they're chopping hay or corn, whatever, they're going all the way through the farm now to get out, right?
So they, they have, uh, either, either we will give them a right of way, uh, they could have, they could technically have this, or they also, because they own now all of this, they can come from the other fields that were Dutchfield Farm, which we also owned, and come here into this, pretty easily into this, uh, there's a bridge right here, and they have this 30 acres here.
The only other thing I could see would be to acquire that piece there.
30, we can't anymore, it's, it's, it's-
So, you need to back it by acres?
Not, not even sold, it's, it's that they-
Yeah, to back it by acres.
The Department of Ag and Markets were very adamant about how, uh, how we think, how we were to do this, they wanted to keep fields in their entirety and not break up the fields.
I understand that. Okay, any other discussions? Well then, I guess we should try to schedule a public hearing.
Next, your next meeting is the day after Martin Luther King Day, so it's Tuesday, the 21st.
I will be here.
Of January. Okay.
And I don't know, I don't know whether we, uh, be able to call in or not.
No, there's no more of that.
No more of that at all, huh?
No more of that.
Okay.
25, huh?
Yeah.
23 is back over here.
21.
January 21, 2025. Yep.
2025.
All right.
Okay.
Public hearing scheduled, you'll need to make a motion.
Thank you very much.
We need a motion.
I make a motion to have a public hearing for the Levin matter on January 21st, 2025.
I second that.
I third that.
All opposed? All in favor?
All, all.
So carry. Thank you. Last matter on the agenda. Minutes for the November 18th meeting. Any corrections, additions, or omissions, or?
The, um, the corrections that I have, I submitted to Judy at the beginning of the meetings.
Corrections I had, I submitted to Judy, Judy.
Very similar.
Very similar ones, yes.
Very similar.
Yes, they were. All right.
So you say as amended.
Then I would, uh, request a, uh, motion to accept them as amended.
I so move.
I second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor.
All right.
I.
So move, so carry. You know what that means?
I move that we adjourn.
Sounds-
I second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so move. Okay, so moved.